Ladies and gentlemen, we're called to order the meeting of the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners and Commissioner Schaefer will lead us in a prayer, then we'll be led into pledge by Commissioner Jordan.
I would like to share a prayer with you tonight that was written by a Methodist minister, Reverend Cameron, and he is presently in Guyana, which is somewhere down there in Central America on the Atlantic side, I believe. But it's a prayer about Thanksgiving, and I thought it was appropriate for what we'll be celebrating a week from tonight. "Our precious heavenly Father, on this Thanksgiving Day, we come before your throne, knowing that all things come from you, and with humble hearts we bow before you, thanking you for your many blessings, for rest and health, food and shelter, and for love and friends. Our gratitude is boundless as we pray. We ask that at each table where grateful hearts say words of grace, that you will continue to provide. We know that your mighty hand encircles everyone throughout the world and with deep devotion. We offer up thankful homage to you and pray that you will continue to bless your people everywhere, especially the poor and the needy of our world. May your peace come to stay in our hearts and lives when candles glow this Thanksgiving Day. In Jesus' name, amen."
Amen.
(Inhales) To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the robe?
Commissioner Schaefer.
Here.
Commissioner Black.
Here.
Commissioner Jordan.
Here.
Commissioner P.
Here.
Commissioner Cook.
Here.
Commissioner Jernigan.
Here.
Commissioner Farley.
Here.
Commissioner Jones.
Here.
Commissioner Sandlin.
Here.
Commissioner Turner.
Here.
Commissioner Allen.
Here.
Commissioner Stevens.
Here.
Commissioner Jordan.
Here.
Commissioner Baum.
Here.
Commissioner Coggan.
Present.
Commissioner Young.
Here.
Commissioner Phillips.
Present.
Commissioner McAdoo.
Here.
Commissioner Ely.
Here.
Commissioner Gooch.
Here.
Commissioner Serrino.
Here.
Twenty-one present.
Thank you. We have before you a copy of the minutes of the last meeting. Do we have a motion concerning their approval? Commissioner Phillips.
Thank you, Mayor Burgess. I'd like to move that they be approved as mailed and corrected, one of the corrections being they had the date of 2009 versus 2010, and John L. Beatty was listed on the Consolidated Communications Board instead of the District Board. With those two corrections, I move that they be...
Do we have a second? Commissioner Sandlin, any other discussion? Thank you for catching those things that need to be changed. All in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Now Commissioner Schaefer will have a resolution of recognition for the Laverne High School Marching Band.
I would also like to invite Commissioner Turner to come up and join me. Laverne High School, there's Ms. Cook and myself represent Laverne. Commissioner Turner has, part of his district is in Laverne also, and it so happens that the high schools there. So we thought this evening we would share this letter of recognition. And I would like to invite Mr. Chris Crumley and his drum majors to come up. And Mr. Freitag was unable to be with us tonight. He is the band director, but he's having a session with his percussion. What's that? Is that horns?
No.
Nope. Is it drums? Drums, that's close. And Mr. Turner is now gonna read the resolution of recognition.
Thank you, Commissioner. Whereas for the second time in the last four years, the Laverne High School Marching Band was invited to compete in the 2010 United States Scholastic Band Association Grand National Championships at the United States Naval Academy in Annapolis, Maryland. And whereas the Laverne High School Marching Band placed ninth overall in the USSBA Group Five National Competition, the Drum Line placed second, the Color Guard placed 12th, resulting in national rankings for the Laverne High School Groups. Whereas the Laverne High School Marching Band, based on its competitive successes in the USSBA state and regional events, was the only band selected from Tennessee as a representative. Whereas these achievements were due solely to the hard work, dedication, and commitment of each band and staff member, along with 114 band members of the 2010 Laverne High School Band. Whereas the directing staff is Director of Bands Edward Freitag, Assistant Director of Bands Chris Crumley, and Special Staff Tim White, Trey Kokroft, Katie York, Kim McKim, and Lisa Covert. Now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that we extend this resolution of recognition to the 2010-2011 Laverne High School Marching Band on your accomplishment by achieving national rankings at the 2010 USSBA Grand National Championships, and to Director Edward Freitag and Assistant Director Chris Crumley and their staff for their dedication and commitment to these young musicians. Resolve this 18th day of November, 2010. Mr. Chairman, I respectfully submit this for approval.
Second, Commissioner Schaefer. All of you in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Other comments?
I'd like to invite Mr. Crumley to say a couple words to it.
I'd like to thank the mayor and the commissioners for this recognition. Mr. Freitag, as Mr. Schaefer said, was, he's at a rehearsal right now and he couldn't be here, so he gladly sent me. And two of our drum majors, like to allow them to say a few things, and thank you for your support, not only for this event, but for throughout the year. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Elizabeth Henderson, and on behalf of the entire membership, I'd really like to thank the entire county commission for their recognition tonight.
Hi, I'm Jessica Henderson, and I'd also really like to thank our two band directors, Mr. Chris Crumley and Edra Freitag, and also our visual instructor, Tim White, for just proving to us that passion and hard work and dedication really does pay off in the long run. Thank you.
Now, the next item on the agenda is public comments, and we have 30 minutes set aside for the public comments, and we have more people that wish to speak than allow us to complete this by 6:30, but we do have to have our public hearing regarding a conditional use permit request at 6:30. So we won't quite get finished with these public comments by the time we have to do that public hearing, but then we will continue those as soon as the public hearing is completed. So the first person that we have, and I'll remind each of you to come forward and give us again your name and your address, and each of you are allowed to have three minutes to say what you'd like to say. And we do have on the podium here a device that will give you forewarning before your time is up, and then it will beep at the end of the three-minute period. So our first person to speak is Barry Appeland.
My name is Barry Appeland. Address is 4714 Kuchar Court in Murfreesboro. And there's a lot of other people will speak after me that have a little bit more details, and I think there's been some coverage about the recent events with the Rutherford Wrestling Program and the building on the Blackman Middle School area. I'm gonna speak just about how it's affected my family personally and my children, and then hopefully other people will kinda get that up. I have two boys that are involved in the program. We've been wrestling, they've been participating in the sport since they were four and five years old, and they're now 11 and 12. So this has been something that they've dedicated their time, and you know, we're fortunate enough to live in an area where there's a club that has a year-round program. Most places, kids get a few months of practice and then tournaments, and then they go off and do other things. This is one of the few clubs in the area that has an opportunity for these kids to participate year-round, and felt very fortunate to be involved in that. The quality of coaching and seeing the number of kids that go through this, go on and have successful high school careers, a number of them have gone on to wrestle in college, and it's given these kids an opportunity that they may not have had otherwise. It's something that my family cares deeply about. I've got a nephew that wrestles at the University of Michigan. It's something that we care about. I watch football, I love it, but wrestling is really what we care about. And to have this building taken away from us in the manner that it was, just kinda ripped the heart out of my entire family. So hopefully others will come up and kinda get into the details and how that happened. But I'm appalled that elected officials would use children as a weapon to get back at other people, and that's really what it's come down to. It just, I can't even, words can't, or escape me to the disgust that I have for that happening to the kids. Not just my kids, there's probably 70 kids that were there. Last year, they had two practices going at a time. There were kids as young as four, five, six years old that were in there practicing several days a week. It's somewhere for these kids to go after school, it's structured. If you saw the quality of athlete that come out of this program, there's no reason that you wouldn't want this to just be there for everybody, for the community. This is one of the premier programs in middle Tennessee, not the whole state of Tennessee as it is. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Appeland. Next speaker is Jan Dodson.
Actually, it's Jan Dodson. And I live at 3075 God James Road in Las Casas. I have three sons who have collectively spent over 25 years in the Rutherford Wrestling Program. I could speak for much longer than my allotted time about its positive impact on my boys. It has better equipped them for the sport of wrestling and also for life. But tonight I want to address the ethical issues involved in this situation. Our program has been in existence for 12 years, serving youth all over Rutherford County. It has been a feeder program for our high schools, as well as enabling some to attend college on wrestling scholarships. Four years ago, Bill Kennedy and our wrestling family worked very hard in order to raise over $200,000 to build our wrestling building. It was placed on school property with the approval of the school board, with the understanding that it would be for the exclusive use of the Rutherford Wrestling Club and the youth it served. High schools were invited to participate, but declined. On October 29th, our newly-elected sheriff went into our building without cause, with a command task force including inmate prisoners while children were on the premises. They took our mats, HIPAA protected information from locked filing cabinets and various other items. We have requested but have never received an inventory of what was taken. The mats are back, but they are damaged. Then Sheriff Honore presumed to give the building, of which we were already given exclusive use, to the Rutherford County Schools. Initially, they took over use of our building, first five days per week and then three days. When we were asked to submit a facility usage form to be able to use the building that we had already been using for over four years, we delayed that a bit. We were waiting on final legal advice about this issue, and while we were doing so, the school system took the building completely, denied us any use, and changed the locks on the doors. The school system and Mr. Harry Gill would have you believe that if we would just sign this form, the whole situation could be resolved. But if we signed that form, we would be forced to have to ask permission to use this building that we paid for entirely and have already been given exclusive rights to. It would kill our program with its limitations. Either way, morally and ethically, we shouldn't even be asked to do such a thing. My 14-year-old son asked me recently what is happening with the wrestling program. When I told him that the sheriff had removed the mats, he asked whose they were, and when I said they were ours, he said, "What is the world coming to when our own sheriff takes wrestling mats away from a kid's wrestling program?" I've not been able to answer that question. Sheriff has been contacted but hangs up on us. Superintendent Harry Gill has said he does not want emails about this. So we're coming to you as our county's decision-makers to ask, are we going to let our elected officials do such a thing? What is different now? Why was our building taken from us? The moral question is, is Rutherford County, Tennessee going to allow a $200,000 facility made possible entirely by the hard work of our wrestling club to be simply taken away from us? Will the school system be allowed to rob us of our hard work and, more importantly, the invaluable program that has been provided for so many wrestlers for so long? Please hear our request to be an example for our kids. Help us show our children that our elected officials are for the purpose of serving the community, not tearing it apart.
Thank you. Next, Johnny Hafner.
Commissioners, I appreciate the time to be able to come and address you about this. My name's Johnny Hafner, I'm a veterinarian. I used to work at MTSU for the last seven years, now I work for the US Department of Agriculture. And my address is 410 Woodland Trail in Smyrna. My son Will, 14-years-old, is on the sharpshooter team. And I'd just like to say how helpful that this program and Coach Kennedy has been to Will. Will was a new wrestler and started in the middle of the season. Coach Kennedy made him feel like a part of the team immediately, worked with him throughout the year. And in case you don't know, he's there year-round. It's not just during wrestling season. Even if there's just three or four boys there, he's there from 3:30 to 5:30 or 7:00, working with them. I've watched him during practice. He is, he doesn't just teach them wrestling. He teaches them discipline, he teaches them value of hard work and respect for others. That's why I like his program. I love wrestling, I did it when I was in school, but the values that Coach Kennedy is instilling in these boys is much more valuable than anything on the mat. If it weren't for Coach Kennedy, this building, the program, the equipment, none of it would even be in existence, let alone be taken away. You know, it's just a shame that a public servant, because of his feelings toward a person, can do this. Wrestling in general, it benefits boys in so many ways, because the little fellers can wrestle. They don't have to be a tall boy to play basketball, or a big boy to play football, because they're wrestling against somebody their own size. And these boys, they need a strong masculine influence that's so often lacking today. And Coach Kennedy has been that, the other men that's been there helping them coach, they instill values in them that they don't get just anywhere. I would just like to let you know that what these boys are learning, it's an excellent program, and I'm asking you as county commissioners to put the interests of the boys ahead of politics and personal feelings, and do whatever has to be done to get it back on track. You have the authority to do that, and I just ask you to do it, to do what's right. A lot of times, things are done what's legal and winds up being awful. And you know what's right, you can see it. We've been passed a letter from Burgess and McFarland, the law office. It explains it very well. If you don't, if you're not familiar with it, I would encourage you each to get a copy of this letter. I just read it tonight, and it describes the situation very well. And again, I just ask you, please get this program back on track. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker would be Brad Luther.
My name's Brad Luther, 3129 Cary Brook Drive. I'm in District 20. I'm here on behalf of my son, who just recently joined the wrestling club. I'd like to say that Nathan was very excited to, you know, start his wrestling career, and I was equally excited, especially after I went to a few practices, to see the world-class instruction that they were getting right here in Rutherford County. I was also amazed to find out that this group of people cared so much for their kids and the sport of wrestling, that they raised over $200,000 to build a practice facility. I know with our baseball teams, if we raise $1,000, you know, that's great, but $200,000 just, you know, is mind-boggling. Now, at no fault of their own, the training facility built for these kids has been taken away, and the circumstances around it, you know, I don't know if legally correct or not, but morally, I think it is incorrect. If there's anything that this commission can do to help restore the club's rights to their own building, I would appreciate it greatly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Luther. Laura Chico.
My name is Laura Chico, 946 Rutledge Drive, Rockvale. Good evening. My name is Laura Chico. My family is known Bill Kennedy over nine years, and he has coached our son Anthony in wrestling for five years. The club started at Rockvale Elementary School, went to Blackman Elementary School, and finally ended up at Blackman Middle School, where the wrestling club was able to have their building built. Bill Kennedy worked hard on getting grants and funds to build the wrestling building and for the equipment inside, while the parents helped fundraisers. The wrestling program is dedicated to help build character and strengthen the children who participate. They're also taught to win and lose with dignity. Wrestling is a physical sport, but it also teaches a child good mental skills, as well as the skills to be great athletes. When they leave the wrestling program, they go on to high school and may choose to stay with the wrestling. Many have good careers, and a lot of them go on to the state championship. Bill Kennedy in the wrestling program has been an excellent mentor to Anthony. He went on and wrestled two and a half years at Blackman High School and made it to the state championship twice. Anthony was recruited by a couple colleges, but chose to go to UT Knoxville, majoring in pre-mat and nutrition. Wrestling is in Anthony's blood. He loves and respects the sport. He has made lifelong friends throughout Tennessee and other states where he has wrestled. Even though they were opponents on the mat, they were friends off. We believe wrestling helps shape Anthony into the mature and intelligent man he is today. What is happening to the Rutherford Wrestling Club building, equipment, and private paperwork is a disgrace. Countless hours of teaching, practicing, sweat, tears, fun, and determination have been spent in this wrestling building by the wrestlers and Coach Bill. The actions that were taken over the past few weeks are hurting the wrestlers and their personal goals the most. They look forward to going to their own building five afternoons a week to learn the sport of wrestling and to be with their friends. The wrestlers work very hard toward the opportunity to go to different competitions so they can do their best and win medals. The record of this wrestling club speaks for itself. It's an excellent program for the children of Rutherford County and should not be terminated. Don't let the hard work of the wrestlers, their parents, and Coach Bill become collateral damage because the internal disputes of the Sheriff's Department and the Rutherford County School Superintendent Office. Thank you.
Thank you. Out of all the people that have chosen to speak tonight, only one person has an agenda topic that's on our agenda. So I have the right to give priority to that person, and I want to do that before we have the actual public hearings, just in case they have other plans. But I'm going to call on Mr. Marvin Whitworth. He's the only person that has an item that is reflected on our agenda.
My name is Marvin Whitworth. I live at 2307 Whiteus Road in District 7. Mayor Burgess, honorable ladies and gentlemen of the Rutherford County Commission, I'm humbled to stand before you tonight. My family, my wife's family, were members of the middle Tennessee-Rutherford County area before Tennessee became a state. I'm very proud of Rutherford County and what it has, and am proud to invite people and host people, as I did this afternoon, from Washington DC to see our beautiful county. In a few moments, you will have an opportunity to vote on legislation that affects our county in the anti-litter resolution. I want to talk to you tonight and urge you to vote nay on that because of a few things, mainly the unintended consequences of what may happen from it. Point number one, you cannot legislate responsibility. You cannot legislate people to do what's right. We have speeding laws, case in point. We have stop signs. We have laws against stealing. And yet, since I have begun speaking, someone has sped. There's been a stop sign run, probably somebody shoplifted at Walmart. Point number two is, if that person were caught, they would pay the fine. But as this anti-litter law is written, if someone litters, the property owner stands to pay the fine. That's almost like saying, if somebody's speeding down the road in front of your house, they get caught, you pay the fine. Or the manager at Walmart or Kroger's being asked to pay the fine because someone shoplifted from his store. I see the legislation that you are contemplating tonight to be an administrative nightmare. There is no way you can hire enough people to keep all the litter corrected. Article number 27 says, "I can quit my day job, follow people around the county, call in names and phone numbers, and have your compliance officer or officers go out to see them, and you'll pay me $50 to turn my neighbors in." You cannot legislate people to do the things that are right. I see this as legislation, although well-intended, and I want Rutherford County to be the most beautiful place in the state, and I think it is. You can't make people do what's right. I keep my place clean, I expect other people, but whose right is it to tell me that I need to clean up my property? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Whitworth. I believe now that we're just quarter to my clock, about a minute away from 6:30, so we've used about 19 minutes of our public comment time. So we will then go to our agenda item regarding this one public hearing that we have, and that is to amend the conditional use permit, and the request number is 10-A013, Mr. Buford Powell, located at 4220 Midland Road. The existing zoning at this location is services, and the existing conditional use permit is for a baseball training facility, and the amendment is requested to add additional uses on a site that's approximately 4.4 acres, and Mr. Demossi will explain this more fully.
Yes, Mayor, thank you, and good evening, Mayor, and members of the commission. This property is located along the west side of Midland Road. The property's size in its entirety is just a little less than 15 acres. The front four and a half acres roughly of the property was rezoned services back in 2008, August of 2008, for a baseball training facility. At the time, there were some concerns about creating a commercial property in this location, however, this seems to have functioned very well where it is located. A site plan was approved in November of 2008 for a 5,000-square-foot building, and the applicant has built it to resemble a barn, similar to some of the other structures in the surrounding area. It was recently discovered that the applicant had rented out a small portion of the building for an upholstery shop. This does not appear to be something that was intentional. He had a small space left over and just felt that he was allowed to use it, didn't realize that there were some additional regulations to go along with that. He also used the property to store a couple of work vehicles he uses in an unrelated business outside of the county. Staff did have some concerns regarding the uses that the applicant is proposing originally. The site is designed for a single purpose, although it does have this secondary area within it, but it could function well as a neighborhood commercial node, which purposes includes offering small-scale shopping and service needs to the localized area. Most of the uses he was proposing, we felt pretty comfortable with, such as a small retail or convenience store, specialty shop, something to that effect. We did, he was proposing a few other uses, such as wholesale trade and warehouse storage, that staff had some concerns regarding. that staff had some, some concerns regarding. There was also auto repair that was something that was discussed. After some discussion with the planning commission, though, and listening to the applicant, how he explained that it was going to run, the commission did feel comfortable, including auto repair as well, as long as no work was conducted outside of the building, and according to the applicant, there would be none. So the recommendation you have before you was that the new uses would be for the upholstery shop, a small retail, well, retail and convenience store, but no auto sales, a heating and air-conditioning gym or a health club, restaurant catering business, video arcade, specialty shops, and personal services such as dance, dance studio or martial arts studio and beauty shops. This, again, there was some discussion regarding this at the planning commission. However, ultimately, the planning commission did recommend approval of this by a vote of eight, four, and zero against, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions of Mr. Demossi before we have the public hearing? Okay, then, thank you, Mr. Demossi. Okay, so we're going to declare the public hearing open, that allows anyone here that's present to speak for or against this proposed request of adding the additional uses to this conditional use permit. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak for or against this proposal? If so, you're invited to come forward and give us your name and address and make your Okay, no one wishes to speak, therefore, we're going to declare the public hearing closed. Do we have a motion concerning this request?
I move to approve. I move to approve it, please.
Commissioner.
I'm sorry. I move to approve this.
And second, Commissioner Farley. With the conditions stipulated in the recommendation from the planning commission, would that be correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all of you in favor of that, please say aye. Are there any opposed? All right, thank you very much. Mr. Demossi would like to make a quick announcement. Yes?
Thank you, Mayor. Just, just one quick announcement I wanted to make. The comprehensive plan, we're getting close to a completion of that process for the first phase of the project, and as part of that, we're going to be having a public hearing at our planning commission meeting on December 13th. It'll be at 6:00 PM in this, in this facility and in this room. So if anybody would like to come and be a part of that, we'd love to have you here. Our consultant will be making a presentation, and we'll be asking for comments from the public. So, thank you. Yes, you'll be televised.
Okay, we're, we will resume the public comment period. We have about 11 minutes, and that may be three or four people. So next, we have listed Kim Fierbacher. And I may have mispronounced another name.
My name's Kim Fierbacher. I live in District Eight, 5411 San Ives Drive, out in the Blackman community. Probably know what this is about. I'm here tonight to speak about the Rutherford Wrestling Club, and, or we're known as Sharpshooters. We've been wrestling, my family's been wrestling with the Sharpshooters for over seven years. We first started when we would meet for practice in the middle school gym, and that was fine, but we kept growing and growing, and we needed a space of our own. So in 2005, after a lot of hard work, a lot of fundraising, countless hours in concessions, we raised the money, and the Sharpshooter built the building by Middle, Blackman Middle School. Our wrestlers have utilized the building since 2005, as well as others in the community. On October 29th, our wrestling world changed, and not for the better. The Sheriff's Department came into our building, took our mats and countless other items, and they changed the locks, and we were not allowed into the building. They brought the mats, mats back the following Monday on November 1st, but then again, Monday of this week, we were kicked out of the building again. This is hurting no one but our boys. All I want to know is why this is happening. I don't understand why this is happening. I'd like for our county commission to know that what this program means to our community, how the program helps shape and mold our youth into adults we need for our future. This program helps our wrestlers become team athletes. They learn about nutrition. They keep their grades up in order to compete in wrestling. They have great mentors and coaches. It gives them a positive place to go to better themselves, and they get to be a part of a wonderful wrestling family. And yes, it's a family. Coach Bill refers to us as the wrestling family. We support each other well into high school and beyond. One of my oldest son's wrestling mate's mom helped my son through a situation. I thanked her, and she said there was no thanks needed because it's going to take all of us to raise the boys. Now, that's a family. In closing, I'd like to tell you, I came in late, and the reason I'm late is, I just came from the high school where my oldest son is a senior. And tonight, he and his best friend, Adam Wells, signed a wrestling scholarship with MPSU because of this program. There are other boys recently, in the past years and this year, Kenny Meredith signed with Oklahoma Central, Josh Patton signed with the Navy, Mike Kennedy signed with UTC, Graham Smith is also signing with Cumberland. We have many Sharpshooters looking for scholarships, but this cannot happen unless we get them back on the mat. Again, thank you, and if we can try to get this fixed, all of us working together, that should be what we need to do.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Bob Mitchie.
A simple phone call in the beginning, and I doubt that we would have had this mess. It all started with a revenge-seeking sheriff who removed wrestling equipment and confidential records from the building we were fighting over. The interesting part is, the items he took were the property at the Rutherford Wrestling Club, and he had no legal presence to confiscate them. But he said he was sorry, which he believes should absolve him of all accountability. Now he sits on the sideline trying to be transparent. So here we are with a full-blown, take-a-prisoner-to-school dispute between the Rutherford Wrestling Club and Rutherford County. This disagreement's escalation has been fueled with criminal activity, biased media coverage, half-truths, politics, no communication, and cavalry of lawyers. When considering all these factors, the hope of a quick, fair remedy is a long shot. Jumping ahead, when and if we do reach an accord, there will be no winners, only losers. While be left are a group of young wrestlers who were cheated out of participating in the sport that they love. Ultimately, they're only losers in this adult, ultimately, they're the only losers in this adult game. It is our duty to provide leadership guidance to our children while teaching them the difference between right and wrong. The good part, we have educated during this dilemma. However, there's been little, if any, good taught and a whole bunch of bad. What a sad, sad commentator, and our sheriff and school superintendent push our student athletes aside to pursue personal agendas. In closing, I'd like to urge all parties to find a fast, fair solution to the problem before we alienate our children even more. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Donald Todd.
I'm Donald Todd, and I live at 633 Buck Lane. How to save our constitution in Tennessee. In cities, counties, and states, why are governmental decisions increasingly being made by officials who are unelected and who cannot be removed from office by a vote of the people? You may ask, how could this happen in middle Tennessee? The reason for this is, Metro government is taking away the voting power of the taxpayers. You also may ask, where and how are the voters losing their voting power? Well, take a close look at how the Greater Nashville Regional Council, GNRC, is operating. This group approves of financial grants that can benefit thousands of citizens in middle Tennessee. But if the governing board of the GNRC disapproves of a financial request by the local citizens, there is no way that the voters can remove these board members in an election because this governing board was never elected by the people. The other non-constitutional aspect of Metro governing is the manner in which the municipal stadium tax is set up by legislative decree, the Metro Law TCA 7-3-202, which levies this tax, also mandates that the proceeds from this tax be retained by the Metro Government or the GNRC. Therefore, this involves taxation by an unelected body, the GNRC. Apparently, this is taxation without representation. Metro Government or collectivism is a federally controlled operation, and back in 1972, one official in Texas issued a warning, quote, "The more power Metro obtains, the more Metro will be accepted as another layer of government." It is the belief of many people that once this is accomplished, efforts will be made to dissolve our present county form of government, and then eventually our municipal form of government. This will not only take the government further from the people, it will be taking it out of the hands of the people," unquote. Metro officials are promoting a dangerous concept known as sustainable development, or the ICLEI. Under Metro or ICLEI, federal agents will impose dictatorial regulations over our lives. Governor-elect Bill Haslam is in favor of this kind of bureaucracy. The solution to this crisis is, put pressure on the Tennessee Legislature not only to investigate Metro or ICLEI, but to repeal those Metro laws that bypass the Constitution and to withhold funds from branch schools of the University of Tennessee, which are training city and county financial officers to follow Metro policies. Even some elected officials in this room admit that their hands are being tied by the decisions of appointed officials. Thank you.
Thank you. We have time for one more speaker. Matt Sales.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commission members. My name is Matt Sales. I live at 4836 Trevino Court. I think that's District 20. And I'm here tonight not to hash over all of the issues. I think that some of the speakers before me have done that very well. What I want to explain to you is that I've lived in Murfreesboro my whole life. When I was a kid growing up, I don't think wrestling was available to me, or if it was, my mom couldn't afford it. And I now have a freshman who went through the program that Bill has, and last night, he was named the starter of the wrestling team as a freshman for his weight class. And when I picked him up, the, the sight that I held before me was one of pure joy, and it made me the proudest that I've been of him in a while. He really accomplished a lot in that. And I'd like that to be able to continue for the other two boys that I've brought here with me tonight. One of the things that wrestling has taught my sons is sportsmanship. It's just you and another guy, and if you get beat, you're laying on the ground, and you get up and you shake the guy's hand, and you tell him, hey, good job. And I haven't seen a great deal of sportsmanship from the adults where this situation is concerned. And I'm here tonight to ask you guys to try to help us bring that sense of sportsmanship and community, and let's get this issue resolved, and see if we can move forward and get my kids back on track with a lot of other folks. And I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Now we're ready for elections and confirmations. Commissioner Farley, would you like to speak?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I don't know if this is appropriate or not, but I, I mean, but based on, and I hadn't planned on doing this, but I've been sitting here listening to some of the comments being made tonight. I guess as Chairman of Public Safety, I'd received calls concerning the wrestling club. And just sitting here reading some of the documentation that I've been given tonight, and taking personalities out of the whole situation, on, between Mr. Kennedy and Mr. Arnold. But there's a paragraph in here that I'd like some clarification on, and I don't know if it's Mr. Cope or who would be the people.
Well, I mean, I think probably we haven't seen that documentation you have there, but in any event, I think it'd be more appropriate for us to refer this back to the Public Safety Committee, what have you, and bring that forward, because I think there'd be ample opportunity for full disclosure.
Okay. All right, that'd be, that'd be fine, and as Chairman, I'll put that on our, our agenda.
Put that on their agenda, yes, sir. And Commissioner Phillips, I believe you were correct in pointing out that one of these agenda items was covered last month.
Okay.
That's on our agenda, the confirmation of Mr. Beatty. Is that correct?
Mayor Burgess, there are a list of, and Commissioners, there's a list of notary public applicants on your desk, and I move that they be approved.
Second, Commissioner Jurnigan. Any discussion? All of you in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
We need to announce three vacancies on the Agricultural Advisory Board. Commissioner Steve Sandlin, Ms. Jean Wilson, and Tommy Gentry. I believe Commissioner Sandlin is newly appointed, but must be appointed again, and Ms. Wilson and Mr. Gentry have served three terms and are not eligible to be reappointed. We need to announce two vacancies on the Correctional Work Center Board, Tom Hartley and Grant Kelly. And we also need to fill the alternate vacancy on the Board of Zoning Appeals to fill the unexpired term of Joe Crowell, and the Steering Committee recommends Mr. Michael Rather, and I move for his approval.
Second by Commissioner Jordan. Any discussion? All of you in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much.
We also need to fill the county coroner vacancy, and the Steering Committee recommends the reappointment of Mike Nunley. A nice little move.
Second by Commissioner Sandlin. Any discussion? All in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Commissioner Phillips, and please note that we made an error, my office did, in putting that Agenda Item Six under H there. That's already been disposed of last month. There is no unfinished business. We're ready for reports on, by the standing committees. The Purchasing Committee has no report this month. We're ready for Mrs. Commissioner Ely to give the Budget, Finance, and Investment Committee report.
Item K2A, General Fund Budget Amendments. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners, that the general fund be amended as follows. From the Sheriff's Department and jail, increased revenue from sale of recycled materials, $161. This is revenue from Clark Iron. Increased expenditures, jail maintenance and repair of buildings, $161. Increased revenue contributions of $24,000 from the Tennessee Emergency Communications Board. Increased expenditures, Sheriff's Department in-service training, $24,000. Register of deeds from restricted-for-general government, $26,400, to data processing services, $4,400. Data processing equipment, $22,000. This is to update equipment in preparation for electronic filing. Assessor of Property Board of Equalization, from Board of Equalization consultants, $4,600, to Assessor of Property Furniture and Fixtures, $4,600. This is to fund cubicles for two additional workstations. Increased revenue, other general government, $500. This is to supplement an employee who has received the designation of a certified public administrator, and from Board of Equalization consultants, $704. Two salary supplements, $1,000, and the noted related benefits. Information technology from unassigned fund balance, $1,230, to data processing personnel, $1,015, and the related benefits. This is a correction as an individual in this department should have received a step. Fire and rescue from unassigned fund balance, $17,000, to rentals, $17,000. This is for the Rutherford Volunteer Fire Department to pay rentals until the new building is constructed, and that should be for this fiscal year. Resolve this 18th day of November 2010. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second. Second, Commissioner Sandlin. Commissioner Sandlin.
Mr. Chairman, I did have one other question. We, we just briefly talked about it in budget the other night on the rentals under the fire and rescue part, but that was the, I guess, the lease or rent on the building there. and rescue part, but that was the, I guess, the lease or rent on the building there. $17,000, I guess, gets us through the end of this fiscal year for next year's budget or whatever. But wasn't those funds being raised and paid out through the volunteer department there? And why is that not still concur, I guess, with what we're doing in the transfer and...
Well, we've taken over the responsibility for the buildings and all of the operations. They have merged into our fire and rescue department, so it's our responsibility to pick those. They had paid the rent through September, but this starts the rent October the 1st through the balance of this fiscal year. So it's our responsibility to do that from this point forward.
Okay, so they won't be raising any more funds?
They may be raising money, but that...
But it won't go to this?
Wouldn't go to this necessarily. Any other discussion or questions? We have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change their vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty-one yes. Motion passes.
Item K-2B, Special Purpose Fund Budget Amendment. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners, that the Special Purpose Fund be amended as follows. From the Sheriff's Department, from assigned-for-public-safety, $1,877. Increased revenue, investment income, $12. Increased expenditure, other supplies and materials, $1,889. And these supplies and materials is in the asset forfeiture fund. Resolve this 18th day of November, 2010. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second from Ms. Cook. Any discussion? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change their vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty-one yes. Motion passes.
Item K-2C, A Resolution Authorizing a Grant Contract with Tennessee Emergency Management Agency for the 2010 Homeland Security Grant Program. Whereas Rutherford County has been notified of available funds in the amount of $441,959.75 for the 2010 Homeland Security Grant Program for the provision of pass-through funding provided by the United States Department of Homeland Security. And whereas the grant is 100% federally funded and is effective for the period commencing on August 1, 2010, and ending on May 31, 2013. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners, that the county mayor and other appropriate officials of Rutherford County, Tennessee, be and are hereby authorized to execute all necessary documents with the State of Tennessee Department of Military, Tennessee Emergency Management Agency to accept the 2010 Homeland Security Grant in the amount of $441,959.75. A copy of the same being attached heretofore as Exhibit 1, and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim. And Commissioners, you should have in your packet a detailed equipment list for how this money will be spent. This was provided by Mr. Allen. And we will see this again when this grant is awarded. We will need to come back and do the appropriate budget amendment. Resolve this 18th day of November, 2010. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
And second from Commissioner Phillips. Any discussion? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change their vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty-one yes. Motion passes.
Thank you. All right. Next, we have the Health and Education Committee. Commissioner Jordan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As almost everyone in this room is well aware, we have a number of county departments that do an absolutely terrific job in serving the public, and one of those is our excellent Health Department, really two divisions, the North County and the Murfreesboro Department. I ask Ms. Garrett, who's in her second year now of reporting to the Health and Education Committee, I think does a terrific job, to address us tonight for a few minutes on what the Health Department is doing, particularly, I think, I'm not exactly sure everything she's going to say, but I'm certain it'll involve public information. I refer you to the excellent handout that she passed out before, and, Mr. Mayor, I'm not sure what's necessary, but I'd like to suspend the rules and have Ms. Garrett address the group.
Okay. If there are no objections to suspending the rules and allowing Mrs. Garrett to speak, please come forward, Ms. Garrett, and give us your report.
Thank you, Mayor Burgess. Thank you, Commissioners, for letting me speak. When Commissioner Jordan asked me to speak, I said, oh, yeah, I'd love to speak. Anybody who will listen to me, talk about the Health Department. So how long do I have? An hour? Or, no, no, I promise I'll be...
We're going to give you three and a half minutes.
Yeah. I promise I'll be quick. No one's as passionate about it as me, I'm sure, so you don't want to hear. But on your handout, I gave you just a little bit of history for the ones of you who may not know. Some people may not know our history. We started in 1921 with one public health nurse, Maude Ferguson. And we've just come so far, 1930, with some Commonwealth funds of New York, we actually got a building, as well as the hospital. In 1938, we were listed as the official state agency for training health officers, nurses, all the medical resources. There were only 12 doctors in the county at that time. It just continued to grow, and in 1980, we had grown so much at the north end of the county, we had to have an official building, so we opened the Smyrna Building. We call that the North Rutherford County Health Department. In 2002, we kept growing and growing, so we had to move from what is the old Health Department, which is a historic landmark, still stands there today, to our new facility right across the street, into 33,000 square feet there. So we went from a very small building with three or four exam rooms to 25 exam rooms, and build it, and they will come. So we have had lots of increased participation with our nice building. The Rutherford County Health Department currently staffs 79 members of our staff, and they implement programs like primary care, dental health, traditional public health, the WIC Program, which is Women, Infant, and Children Program, Food Nutrition Supplemental Program, the Public Health Community Outreach Programs. The funding comes from many different departments, federal, state, county, local grants. I just thought a few numbers for you. I didn't want to give you too many numbers. But total number of patient encounters in 2008 were 56,000. Total number of patient encounters in 2009 were 57,643. And in 2010, I'm estimating, because we still have a few weeks left in the year, we're estimating around 60,000. So as you can see, we're slowly increasing every year. Average number of patients we're seeing now every day in our clinic is 250 patients a day. So it's a massive undertaking to manage 250 patients and all the staff it takes to offer all the different programs that we do. In comparison, I just gave you some numbers. Our local new hospital, it houses 286 patients, and they average 250 senses. So just to give you an idea of, I know there are different type of patients, but just we have a huge quantity of patients that we're seeing. In order to keep up with the growing demand of the public health services in our community, the North Rutherford County Health Department is yet again, has received a grant from the USDA that will expand their WIC program. We're going to add 3,500 square feet onto that building in the next year. And that was a grant from the USDA for $699,937. And we will present that formally to you guys at the next meeting, the next commission meeting. Our Commissioner of Health is coming to do that, so that's a little update on that. The Rutherford County Health Department is dedicated to this community. In addition to providing awesome public health and medical services, the department has the capacity to provide mass clinic services to the community without interrupting our daily services. Examples of these are the H1N1 outbreaks in 2009 with all the vaccination and caring for those patients. We were able to do 10,000 vaccinations just alone in our clinic, not to mention the ones we went off-site to do. In comparison, we usually do about 1,000 flu shots in a year, so that was a lot. We also provided services and health care for Hurricane Gustav victims and Hurricane Katrina victims, with as many as two clinics running 24 hours a day while those people were here visiting. While we've seen this increase in demand for services that we provide, we realize that it's totally a reflection on the community, how much they trust our services, how much they value what we do, and we're just very glad to have that opportunity to provide those services. And we also realize completely that these services are only possible with the continued support and leadership of the Rutherford County Commission and our Mayor Burgess. At this time, if you have any questions?
Okay. Well, thank you very, very much, Ms. Garrett. We commend you for your leadership and for helping that staff provide extraordinarily important and much-needed services, and it reflected in the number of clients you have. They certainly are choosing to use a very well-staffed and well-qualified agency. We appreciate it very much. Property Management Committee.
Tonight, Property Management Committee have three resolutions. And the first resolution is a resolution to approve lease agreement with Jim Smythe Whereas attached is a lease agreement between Rutherford County, Tennessee, and Jim Smythe Leeson, providing for the lease of 18 Old Salem Road, Murfreesboro, Tennessee, for the use and benefit of the Rutherford County Fire Rescue Department. A copy of the same being attached heretofore as Exhibit 1, and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim, and whereas it is in the best interest of the citizens of Rutherford County for the county to enter into said lease agreement. Now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners, that the county mayor and other appropriate officials be and they hereby be authorized to enter into and execute for and on behalf of Rutherford County, Tennessee, the attached lease agreement with Jim Smythe Leeson. Resolve this 18th day of November, 2010. An I S O move.
Second, Commissioner Farley. Commissioner Sandlin.
Commissioner McAdoo, is this on the Fire Department building that we just talked about just a second ago, the $17,000?
Yes, it is.
Why aren't we signing another agreement or another contract with them when we were already in an agreement or contract with them?
Well, we were not in an agreement with them because the county is just now responsible for that lease. That lease previous to this time was through the Rutherford Volunteer Fire Department. So now that we have actually merged them in, it is our responsibility to engage and enter into this lease.
So we have to do another lease? So everything's the same as it was before? Everything's the same except it's in the hands of Rutherford County instead of the volunteers the way they had it before. Same money? The same money.
No, actually, there is not the same money. There's an increase in the money.
It is.
I want to be clear that we don't give you any invalid information.
There's an increase on the lease?
Yes, sir.
On the monthly?
Yes, it is.
Or we're paying?
I don't know exactly what they're paying, but we're paying market rates now, a little under-market rate now. We discussed this at Property Management, and they have been getting a more favorable treatment than we're getting, let's put it that way, but the money that we're paying is still below current market rates for this type of space.
Well, I understand that, Mayor, but what were we paying compared to what we're paying now?
I don't remember precisely, but it's something under $1,000 a month. I think previously, this is $1,875 a month.
So they almost doubled.
Not quite, but almost.
So June, hopefully June, we'll be out of that building.
We certainly...
And so we're just signing the lease until through June?
Yeah, and we can give notice, with 60 days' notice, we can be out if we were to finish our building quicker. So we're not committed through that period of time, but if we're not into our building, we will stay here through that period of time. And one of the next things that's coming up is an agreement that we will start the engineering drawings for the new building. Any other questions? All right. We've already voted on the actual money part of it, so I don't think we have to have a roll-call vote here. All in favor of this, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
No.
Let the record reflect, there's one no. Okay. Continue, Mr. McAdoo.
Okay. Second item on the agenda is AIA Architec Agreement for Smyrna Health Department Expansion. Whereas attached is an AIA standard form of agreement between owner and architect between Rutherford County, Tennessee, and Johnson &amp; Bailey Architects P.C., providing for an expansion to the Rutherford County Health Department located in Smyrna, Tennessee. A copy of the same being attached heretofore as Exhibit 1, and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim, and where else, it is in the best interest of the citizens of Rutherford County for the county to enter into said AIA standard form of agreement between owner and architect. Now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners, that the county mayor and other appropriate officials be and they hereby are authorized to enter into and execute for and on behalf of Rutherford County, Tennessee, the attached AIA standard form of agreement between owner and architect with Johnson &amp; Bailey Architects. Resolve this 18th day of November, 2010. An I S O move.
Second from Mr. Turner. Any discussion or questions? All in favor of this, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right, thank you.
Okay. Item number C, AIA Architec Agreement for Fire and Rescue Building. Whereas attached is an AIA standard form of agreement between owner and architect between Rutherford County, Tennessee, and Gerald G. Bugsy, consultant engineer, providing for Barfield Road Fire Station Number 1. A copy of the same being attached heretofore as Exhibit 1, and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim, and whereas it is in the best interest of the citizens of Rutherford County for the county to enter into said AIA standard form of agreement between owner and architect. Now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners, that the county mayor and other appropriate officials be and they hereby are authorized to enter into and execute for and on behalf of Rutherford County, Tennessee, the attached AIA standard form of agreement between owner and architect with Gerald C. Bugsy, P.E., resolve this 18th day of November, 2010. An I S O move.
Second, Commissioner Farley. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you.
I got one announcement from Property Management Committee, is that our November 30th meeting, which is at 6 o'clock, the Property Management Committee will be touring the courthouse. So I'm asking if any Commissioners would like to tour the courthouse, to meet up here at 6 o'clock, and then we'll proceed over to the courthouse.
We should have you at 5:30.
5:30? Okay. Correction, 5:30. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner McAdoo. Public Safety Committee.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I'm...
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I've got a resolution here tonight to have the Southeast Rutherford Volunteer Fire Department become part of Rutherford County Fire and Rescue. Whereas it is in the best interest of the citizens of Rutherford County for the Southeast Rutherford Volunteer Fire Department to become part of Rutherford County Fire Department, and Rutherford County to accept transfer and conveyance of the real property and assets of Southeast Rutherford Volunteer Fire Department. Now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the Rutherford County accept the transfer and conveyance of Southeast Rutherford Volunteer Fire Department to become a part of Rutherford County Fire Department. Be it further resolved that the mayor and other appropriate officials be and they are hereby authorized to execute for and on behalf of Rutherford County, Tennessee, and all documents required for the transfer to real property and assets of Southeast Rutherford Volunteer Fire Department and to Rutherford County Fire Department. Resolved this 18th day of November 2010, and I so move. Mr. Chairman.
Second from Commissioner Black. Any discussion? Commissioner P.
When we saw this at Public Safety, I asked the question, had the membership voted on this? And the answer that I got led me to believe that they had. The membership, in fact, has not voted on this. The board for Southeast Rutherford has voted on it, which is a three-member board. And my understanding is their bylaws, they go by their board, but personally speaking, I'd like to hear from the membership before I'm willing to give a yes vote to this.
With the board, as you pointed out, their bylaws allow the board to make that decision. I don't know how we would have to take that back to their board, I guess. I have talked personally to their chief, and all of the members were basically at the meeting that this, when they made this decision, they didn't actually vote, members didn't vote, but they had an opportunity to express themselves fully. I'm not sure whether our chief is here tonight or not, but I think he has discussed that, maybe even with some of the other commissioners. Anyone else like to make a comment on this? Commissioner Sandlin?
This little message, Jill. Hello? Am I there? Says there was a two-to-two tie, and then, I don't know who the breaking tie was, but it seemed like half was for it and half against it, Commissioner P. I mean, is that what you've got?
There are five board members, three of them voted yes, and two voted no.
Okay. So that's right.
Well, when the other, the three departments that come on board with the inception of Rutherford Volunteer Fire Department, Salem Blackman and Rutherford Rescue became Rutherford Fire and Rescue, the board of directors from each one of those departments were the ones that actually voted to actually come on board with Rutherford County. And it's, this here would be, as far southeast, it's the same thing that they've had, that they've done before. So the boards have been the ones to vote, and in their bylaws, that's what it says as far as how they need to make their decisions. The president of the board and also the fire chief of Southeast are here tonight.
Thank you. I thought, Mr. Mayor, you might have said, or Mr. Farley, when the board of directors took the vote, did we know if there was ample opportunity for their members to come and speak, and they just chose not to? Because my concern, in the beginning, when I looked at this, was they really weren't made aware of this decision, that their board of directors were going to vote on it, but they didn't really, one person, I got an email from, said that he was concerned they didn't have enough time to go up there and actually present his concern about it, but if they were given ample time, that changes the way that I look at it. Do we know if they were given ample time?
The chief came to the office this morning. They talked about this for over a period of some months. Most all the members were actually at the meeting when they actually took this vote.
Okay, well, then that clears up.
Except for just two or three said they were actually there.
How many members do they have?
About 30.
Okay, well, then that's 95% that were there.
I mean, what the mayor said is what I understand it to be as well, but if you want it from the horse's mouth, like I said, the chief is here from southeast.
That's who spoke to you this morning, right? Would have given you that information, so that's, I'm fine with that, thank you.
I just wanted to offer that.
No, I appreciate it, thank you, that's fine, but that definitely changed the way I look at it, if, you know, majority of the members were there and they had an opportunity to speak.
Other discussion? We do have a motion and a second on the floor. There's no other discussion. Commissioner Jordan.
I'm quite puzzled about this, really. If they were there, why didn't they vote?
The bylaws do not allow, the bylaws do not allow members to vote. I mean, they elected the board, and the board is authorized to make those decisions.
I understand they're authorized to make decisions, but you're saying the members could not vote?
According to their bylaws, I don't think they could vote.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Jordan.
Well, I might as well weigh in. I got a couple of these emails, and if there are 30-something members for it, and only a couple against it, and those two just happen to be on the board? Because if it's, you know, two out of five voted no, and that's 40%, that gives me a little bit of an uneasy feeling. I don't know how big a hurry we're in to get this done, but 40% of the board voted no. I would hope it would have been unanimous, you know, to come on board to this. This is a big step. And so I just hope we don't do something too hastily that somebody regrets in the future, because, you know, if somebody said, oh, there's only two out of 30-something, well, they happen to be board members, you know, and so that gives me not very much of a comfort level.
What I understand, and I can stand to be corrected, and if I'm wrong, I'd like the chief to clarify this from Southeast. One of the persons that I think has emailed you, I think his wife is on the board. Is that correct? And he's shaking his head in the affirmative.
Commissioner Turner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If we could, could we bring the chief up to answer some of those questions?
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules. To allow the fire chief and/or the president to come up and speak.
We have a motion, Commissioner Turner, and seconded by Commissioner Sandlin, to suspend the rules. All in favor of suspending the rules, allow the chief of more to speak? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, please come forward. And you can, Chief Moore, you can tell us who you have with us, and you can make, you can confirm or give any statement you'd like to, to clarify some of the questions you've heard.
Joe Pantani's our president of the board. I can't remember who all had the questions they wanted to be answered.
Well, I think we kind of was on the same wavelength there. If the board decided, you've got a five-member board, and two of them voted no, and three of them voted yes, I mean, it makes me feel a lot better that everybody's for it if you come up here, five for and no against, but there's 40% that's against it. So, I mean, there is some question there. So, I mean, that's why I'm asking, is what y'all's thoughts on that, or can you help us out a little bit here?
Well, I mean, I'm not on the board. He's the president. Like I said, there was two or three that had some discussion on it, and that wasn't for it 100%. The majority of the membership was for it. The, like I said before, the bylaws, that's what it states, that any type of financial obligation is done by the board of trustees. It was, there's seven total members, five of them are actual board members with two alternates. The two alternates do not have a vote unless one of the regular board members is absent. It was two-to-two with the tiebreaker for that. So it was, the final vote was three-to-two.
Commissioner Allen.
Can you articulate for us a little bit about what the objections were? What's the downside for the merger?
For me personally, I don't see a downside of it. I'm looking at, for the community, the future, as, you know, the departments merge and the growth of it, looking at ISO rating, to lower that for the community, not just for ours, but for the other departments involved. I'm looking at a better opportunity for, you know, our department as a growth, but down the road, future, for, you know, better training, better equipment, just overall better resources.
Yeah, I think you're doing a great job articulating the advantages, but can you share with me what the objections were of the membership?
As far as...
The ones who are opposed to the members, who you said the majority was for it, but there was a minority that was against it. I'm sure you heard some pretty good reasons about what they thought the downside was. I'm just asking you to tell us a little bit about those.
The two, two members of the board, one of them was the financial side of it. They didn't fully understand the financial side, as to how we run and to where, how the county runs, as far as the budget and the finance. Because we have to, you know, we need money, we go to the board, present it, and they vote on it, we go get it. You know, with the county, with the county fire department's on a PO system. So it's a little bit different from what we're used to. The other member, I don't remember, I don't know if she really had a reason or gave one, I can't remember. But the, as far as the two members that were on the board that had issues with it, they felt that it was too soon. They felt that we were ready, but the county wasn't ready to take us on. That's basically, if you have anything else you want to add to it, that's basically about it. I mean, is that what you're wanting to know? Or is there anything else?
Yeah, I would have liked a little more detail, but I understand you're trying to convey somebody else's views, so I appreciate your attempt at answering that.
Commissioner P.
I just wanted to make this statement. I'd had some calls on this, and the person that called me may have been one of these emails, I didn't, where I jotted the name down, I still don't have it, but this person was not against this merger, but they felt like since this was such a big change, that the membership themselves should have the right to vote on this. And it was, I was under the impression from Public Safety that the membership did vote. Well, the membership did not vote. At least, that's my understanding, and I believe that's what you gentlemen are telling me, too. But that's all I'm saying. And this person wasn't against the merger. He actually is running rescue now, and is all in favor of it, but he still felt like the firefighters themselves should have the right to say, well, they were going to do away with this entity they've worked for so long and so hard, instead of having the board say that. And I understand the way the board's set up, that they have the final say, and I think that that's right, but I still think, you know, membership, you know, this is America, and we've got a democracy going here, and I'd kind of like to see it continue. And I think it's fair that the membership would get a voice in this.
Well, would you, I mean, I represented that most all the members were there, and you said, I believe you told me, that they had ample opportunity, all of them, to speak, and you only had the two or three that we're talking about here that had any objection?
Yes, we did discuss it. The board itself discussed it vaguely on several occasions at the meetings. I brought it up several, I think, two, at least two or three meetings after I first approached Chief Farley about it, just that this is a possibility, this is the direction we're moving. And then when it come down to the time of actually the board voting on it, is when the questions came rise and the controversy with it. But before then, nothing was really ever said in any of the meetings.
Any other questions of the chief? Commissioner Jones? Ma'am?
She didn't have a question. She just wants to make a statement.
Oh, okay. Do we wish to have any other information from these two gentlemen? Okay, then, thank you, then, we appreciate that. Now, Commissioner Jones, you'd like to say something?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm on the Public Safety Committee, and originally I did vote yes for this. I was under the impression that it was a larger majority than what I've learned it was that had voted for in favor of this on the board. Also, since then, we've had, I know many of you have seen in the newspaper from the D&amp;J, the school board asking for more money, and I'm really, I was concerned at the Public Safety meeting about the money involved in this, and the possible future money that it is going to cost the county, more money in the years coming, in budget years coming. And so those are my concerns right now.
I just will remind all of you that they're handing, they are offering to hand over property that they have no debt on, which is quite different from those that we've already merged in. And those that we merged in, we only had board approval from all of those entities. Commissioner Jordan.
I just got a question. If this were to fail, what would happen then? This motion? I mean, they're ready to hand it over, their board voted, if we say no, are they just out of business? Or they keep on going like they were? I mean, I just want to be careful about what we're doing, we don't, maybe we'll defer this, if, I mean, maybe it's going to pass, I don't know. But if it's going to fail, make sure we've got a safety net, we don't have a fire department out there that's in limbo, we've got people that need to be protected by it.
Well, we've got a great fire department, and most of them are already participating with us in the rescue side of the Rutherford County Fire Rescue, so we already have interlocking membership even currently with this group, so they're a very valuable asset to us. Any other discussion? Are you ready to vote?
I'll make one comment, Mr. Mayor. In the meeting that night, I want to clarify something, that I understood that, Mr. Commissioner P., that it was the board that had actually voted, when I understood that night from the chief and the president, not the entire department. That's the way I had interpreted it that night, so that the board had voted.
So did I.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other discussion? I think in this particular case, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
19 yes, 2 no, motion passes.
Thank you. Let's see, next is the Steering Legislative and Governmental Committee.
You have before you a resolution to approve a resolution, the anti-litter resolution, which you all have seen before. It's got a little bit of a history behind it, but since we've made it this far with the resolution, at times, we struggle, we seek to find public input. I think we always try to do that, and at times, it's at this point, when we get the public input we've been seeking. So with all that being said, to not belabor this for hours and hours tonight to wind up with no solution, I'm just going to, I'm going to make a motion to defer this resolution and return it to Steering for further review and to seek more public input.
Second, Commissioner P. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Sandlin.
I believe a point of order is, in fact, on that, of that the committee, of course, I voted against it, but the committee sent it to the full commission with approval. So really, the chairman is supposed to bring it to the full commission with approval. And then if they vote it down or up, that's our position, or if there's an amendment to the motion. But that's the actual process that it's supposed to go through.
Well, that very well may be correct, and I would stand corrected. I will remind all of us, and we researched this today by getting a copy of the minutes, this would be the second time that we've done just this. And the first time, the chairperson, Mr. Rogers, made this very same motion to defer, we had a second, and we voted on it and passed that. I don't know that that makes that necessarily right, but we've already set a precedent here, so that's my comment. Commissioner Jordan.
We can always defeat the motion to defer.
Yes, sir, you can.
If somebody wants to vote on it.
Absolutely. So, Commissioner Jordan again?
I'm going to ask the Commissioners to defeat this, to defer. I think we need, we've been wrestling this here for six months, and the more deeper we go, it seems like the further we get into this, it started out to be kind of simple. It started out to be kinda simple, it's turned into about a silver page, and I think Mr. Whitworth put it about as well as you could. My phone rang off the hook this week from people's best lives out in the country. And to me, he couldn't have put it no better. I'll just give you an example on my own place. I'm like Mr. Whitworth. Our family was, lived on a farm ever before the Civil War. But you got a long road fronted there, litter and stuff come down through there. Way this right here lead, code come out there and find you fifty dollars. Your job get it picked up. Same way you got a road running through there with a bridge under it, got a stream running through it. People come through and throw stuff out. Somebody don't like you, come by and call. Here's a code man, there's another fifty dollars. Farmer gets out here, he's got to go on the field, get hay, do stuff, comes out, gets a little something on the road. Somebody don't like it, call. I mean, this thing right here's got plum out of hand, folks. I mean, I think most of the Commissioners here in the rural, if would speak up from what I'm talking to, I just think this thing they'd be voted down if they want to come back with something else. I don't see how this is going to ever work out the way this is. And I'd be the first one to say it and take responsibility. I should have been up there at the other meeting. When Steering was meeting and took more interest in this before it got this far, all of us should have. But been as it has got here, Farm Bureau members, everybody in here, I think, if they'll tell the truth, has got cause about this. And if you look on this commission, the majority of these Commissioners live in Smyrna, La Barre, Muffin Square. And here, we trying to legislate people down the road with this right here out in the country, and I can't see. So, I hope we go and vote it, vote it down.
Okay, we're, we're discussing the motion to defer. Let's see, I don't know whether it's Commissioner Sandlin, but Commissioner P is up, let's let him go.
I agree with Commissioner Jordan again. You know, what I've got here, my phone has rung off the wall. I mean, if you look at it from a practical sense, as far as our farming community and people live out in the rural areas, this is punitive to people that aren't being litter bugs, and they're being fined. I mean, I'm, I'm ready to vote this down right now myself. However, my phone has also been ringing off the wall for several months for people that are fed up with people throwing papers in their yard. And I expect Steering to come up with an answer to that. I'll make a suggestion for this is voted down or it goes back to you. First of all, I would ask for the Farm Bureau to, somebody from their membership, to give you some input on this, and I'd also get maybe Kessling involved with this, you know, proposed legislation. And you might even drag the D and J in there, since most of the complaints that I'm getting are from constituents that are tired of them receiving unwanted papers in their yard. And I'm, I'm ready to issue an ordinance that would put a fifty-dollar fine on these newspaper carriers that are throwing that out there. Now, how the ins and outs work with that, I don't know, but this other stuff, I think we need to leave that alone. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Sandlin.
Well, I'm just asking for a clarification, Mayor, and I'd like to ask Mr. Cope if he can answer that. I, I don't want to get to the point where chairmen of committees are coming with another motion that didn't come out of that committee. The, the motion that come out of the Steering Committee was to approve, and the chairman is presenting to us tonight a motion to defer. Now, I voted against it, so, you know, it's, it needs more work. So, it's kinda like I'm both ways here, but, I mean, we don't need to get, start getting sideways of what the committee said. Chairman's got to report what the committee did and to this committee, and then we do what we're going to do. But there's some other issues in Section 21, some language in there that I, I was really upset with. They got put in at the last minute or about taking the companies off the hook if they can prove that maybe their route person changed or something, and, and they threw it out in the yard by mistake. Well, heck, the route people change every other week or every month. So, they've got an out right there, and the teeth that we did have, we don't have anymore. So, I think that's a part right there I don't like, too, as well as some of these other things. But I'm just trying to make sure we get what the committee had sent, presented to the commission, and then if want to defer, then there was a, a motion to defer in there.
Well, we have, right now, we have the motion to defer on the floor. Mr. Cope is reviewing our commission rules, committee rules. I don't think Robert's Rules of Order comes into play here, so is there anything in those commission rules discussing committee action that you can help us with?
Yes, sir, I can. First of all, a motion to defer is in order at any time, so any commissioner can make a motion to defer according to your rules. Secondly, while I understand history might suggest that the duty of the chair of a committee is to come forward and make the motion of the committee, as, as it were, there's not anything in your rules that require a committee chairperson to do that. The rules provide on reporting procedure the following four things from your committees. It says, "The procedure for reporting the findings of the committee to the commission shall be as follows. The chairman or a member he designates shall report from the rostrum in the front of the courtroom." So, first of all, they just report. They don't, and they have to do it at the rostrum. Secondly, upon presentation of a resolution, the speaker shall yield to questions. That may imply that a resolution could be made by the chairperson, or it could be made by a committee member. There's nothing specifying that the chair has to make a motion. Thirdly, discussion shall be had after there's been a motion and a second, and only then shall there be discussion. And number four, there shall be a vote on the resolution when discussion is complete and where there's a call for the question on the commission. So, technically, your rules do not require a chairperson to make the motion that the committee made. Again, I think the chair has a duty to report what the committee did, but the chairperson's not obligated to make the motion. Certainly, anyone then would be open to make a motion. Did that answer your question?
It's brand-new news to me, because if, if I was the chairman and I was the only one that voted no, then I wasn't doing what my committee wanted to do and come and present it to the full commission with a motion to deny. That's not what come out of committee. A motion to approve is what come out of the committee, and that's what should be presented to the full commission, and then so be it, whatever else happens.
Well, again, that, that's up to the protocol of how you all want to do it. I can't find anything in these rules that make the chairman of the committee make a motion in favor of what out came out of the committee. I think that is then up to the chairperson. If the chairperson doesn't do that, then I think any member of the committee or any member of the commission can make that motion. But I don't think you have anything in here that compels it to be done. And I do agree, Mr. Sandlin, that historically, sometimes committee chairs have gotten up here and say, "I don't agree with what the committee did, I voted against it, I'm not for it, but I'm going to tell you what the committee did." And they may go so far as to say, "I'll make the motion to do it." But, again, there's not anything in your rules that makes the committee chair do that.
That being the case, and the motion to defer is in order at, at any point as far as Robert's Rules of Order. The motion to defer is on the table. Is there any other Commissioners? Jordan again.
If, if it's in order and he, and the motion is to defer, I'm going to ask all the members in here to vote no, not to defer, then we'll turn around and vote on.
Your comment is in order. Any other discussion? Motion to defer, action is on the floor for your vote. Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twelve yes, nine no, motion passes.
Motion is deferred for action back to the Steering Committee. Now, any other, let's see, we have the Public Works and Planning Committee report. Is, is something amiss on our screen there?
No, sir, I just...
Okay. Just wanted to be sure, they were looking...
Seemed kind of very interesting, but I don't know if there's a problem.
Oh, okay. Commissioner Jordan again. Public Works and Planning, please.
Public Works and Planning has two resolutions tonight. First resolution to approve thirty-five mile-per-hour speed limit on Laster Road. The second resolution to, will be to approve drainage easements of one easement on Blackman Road, fifty-five twenty-five, fifty-three twenty-seven, fifty-three sixty-three, fifty-three seventy-three, and one easement in Chadwick Locks twenty-three and twenty-four. Whereas the Rutherford County Highway Department is responsible for certain county roads in Rutherford County in Tennessee. And whereas TCA five-five-eight-one-five-three authorizes the Rutherford County Commission to prescribe speed limits as it may deem appropriate on any road being maintained by Rutherford County and authorizes it to erect the appropriate sign. Whereas the Rutherford County Highway Department has recommended and requested a thirty-five mile-per-hour speed limit with appropriate signings be posted on Laster Road, a designated county road. And whereas the Public Works and Planning Committee has recommended said speed limit be imposed for the safety and welfare of the citizens of Rutherford County, Tennessee, and the maintenance and preservation of this county road and persons traveling there on. And therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners as follows: That the maximum speed limit be and the same shall hereafter be thirty-five miles per hour for all motor vehicles traveling on Laster Road. Said speed limit being deemed appropriate, reasonable by the Rutherford County Commission upon recommendation of the Rutherford County Highway Department pursuant to TCA five-five-eight-one-five-three. Resolve this eighteenth day of November two thousand and ten, I solemnly.
Second from Commissioner Jordan. Any discussion on this? All in favor, please say aye. Anyone opposed? Thank you very much.
Whereas pursuant to the Private Act authorizing Rutherford County Commission and superintendent, road superintendent to work on public drainage easements and provide for the maintenance of public drainage easement requires the county legislative body establish an official list of recognized public drainage easements. The attached Exhibit One are the easements recommended by the planning department. And whereas the Public Works and Planning Committee has approved the list of public drainage easements as submitted by the planning department, and therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county commission approve the attached list of public drainage easements, Exhibit One, as submitted by the planning department in accordance with Tennessee Code Annotated five-four-nine-oh-three and five-four-nine-oh-four. Public drainage easements shall be the only public drainage easements which shall be worked upon by the Rutherford County Highway Department, resolved this eighteenth day of November two thousand and ten, I solemnly...
Second, Mr. Sandlin. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Are there any opposed? Thank you, Commissioner Jordan. Is there any other business anyone has? Commissioner Jordan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I wanted to just call attention to Ms. Joyce Ealy, who's very embarrassed at this moment. Because I'm doing this, but I don't care. Ms. Ealy did not win the spelling bee. She was only a letter off, but she represented us very well, as we knew that she would. And she also, actually, there are no losers in Reed to Succeed, and literacy is, well, we can see on our desk tonight, and the public can see, and many of them are holding all this material, that literacy is a critical aspect of our community. But anyway, Ms. Ealy represented us well, and also, I'm going to thank you for her, since I'm on the Reed to Succeed board, well, at least I was. Yesterday, when Ms. Ealy went down to defeat, I resigned, so. So, I'm really no longer on the board, but I was until yesterday noon. But she also had the most number of donors of anybody in the contest. And of course, many of you were involved in that and participated in that, including myself and probably all of you, and I appreciate it very much. Reed to Succeed appreciates it, and thank you, Ms. Ealy. Appreciate it.
T H A N K, yeah, space, wow.
Well done. Thank you, well done. Commissioner Sandlin?
Mr. Chairman, we've got some high schools being represented tomorrow night. I think Blackman, Smyrna teaming up, and then Riverdale's still in it, and I hope I'm not missing anybody. Okay, that's three. Get out and support them, but if you're going to any of these games, I think you're going to have to go early because it's going to be packed, but three great schools being represented here in Rutherford County in the playoffs, so they're doing a very good job.
Thank you. Commissioner P.
Just to remind everybody, there's going to be a Country Hand Breakfast at the Kitchell Volunteer Fire Department this Saturday, November the twentieth, from six to ten. Appreciate y'all coming out. Thank you.
Excellent food. That would be an opportunity to enjoy food and fellowship. Anyone else have anything they'd like to say? There being nothing else, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.